Where AM and a form of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of October 11, 2022 is called to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and approval of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Ms. Tilly?
Yes, I would like to add a resolution to the agenda for school safety.
Okay, so we have a motion to add a resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Dr. Pritchett. Any discussion, Ms. Tilly, to you to read the motion into the agenda and to say anything you'd like to say about it?
Yes. So, um, the Oxford shooting happened, and we did not do a resolution surrounding it, and there are and have been a lot of issues surrounding safety in schools. So, um, as well as COVID shined up neighbor life as far as mental health issues. So, I want to introduce this. I'm going to go ahead and read it. State Board of Education Resolution on Safe School Environments. Whereas students, staff, families, and communities have been tremendously affected by the mass shooting that took place at Oxford High School on November 30, 2021, the tragedy resulted in the deaths of four students and the injuring of a teacher and six other students. Whereas gun safety must be a priority in every Michigan home, gun owners should lock up their guns and store them safely. Gun owners should supervise any children that they may have in gun use and teach children about proper gun usage and potentially deadly consequences associated with gun usage. Whereas a recent statewide poll conducted by EPIC MRA found that there is substantial agreement among Michiganders on the following eight common sense gun safety initiatives: requiring background checks on all gun sales, including sales at gun shows and other private sales; enacting a child access prevention law that would hold gun owners accountable for the safe storage of firearms; preventing sales of all firearms to people who have been reported to law enforcement as dangerous to themselves or others; requiring a waiting period of at least three days after a gun purchase before the gun can be taken home; imposing criminal penalties or fines for those who buy firearms for another person; requiring a person to be age 21 instead of 18 to be able to purchase an assault-style weapon; establishing a court-issued protection order called an extreme risk protection order; requiring a person to be age 21 instead of 18 to be able to purchase any firearm. Whereas bullying is often cited as a catalyst to violence by students and should be taken seriously in every school, reports of students being bullied and feeling that their safety is in jeopardy should be documented and addressed, including when necessary, in mediation among students with parental involvement and with professional trained and professionals trained in dispute resolution. Whereas Michigan law requires local school districts to have an anti-bullying policy that protects the safety of all students and has the input of parents, students, teachers, and administrators, law enforcement, and other community members. Whereas Governor Gretchen Whitmer and the state legislature negotiated a generational bipartisan state budget this year that included additional state funding for student mental health services of $245 million and for school safety of $210 million. Whereas children's mental health support, including Tier 1 social-emotional learning, whose five competencies are self-awareness, awareness of others, self-management, relationship to others, and responsible decision-making, are important for local school districts to promote school safety and to develop healthy and productive students. Whereas Michigan schools should have access to school social workers and/or guidance counselors as staff or through a partnership with an organization to be available to detect and address any mental health illness that could result in threats that may turn into self-harm or harm to others. Their actions should increase awareness with educators, support staff, and administration through internal communications and trainings, and should help mitigate situations that may have the potential to erupt. Whereas there are students bullied or fearful who act in ways due to the environment or prior threats with the intention of personal protection, schools should have an appropriate plan in place for these instances as well and should mediate among the students in Now therefore be it resolved that the State Board of Education expresses appreciation to Governor Gretchen Whitmer and the state legislature for greater investments in student mental health services and school safety. Be it further resolved that local and intermediate school districts should use these resources to assure that every student feels safe, supported, accepted, and protected in school. Be it further resolved that the State Board of Education strongly urges the state legislature to pass safer gun laws to include the eight aforementioned common sense gun measures on which Michiganders largely agree to make students and staff safer in Michigan schools.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. We have a motion. We have a second. We have had it read into the record. Any discussion? Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, while I have some concerns about some of these items, I certainly am not opposed to a resolution discussing school safety, as I hope my colleagues won't have a problem with a resolution upcoming about government deceiving parents. So, I certainly have no problem adding this to the agenda.
Very good. Other discussions hearing none. Marilyn, if we could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
This is simply a vote to include this item on the agenda. It is not a vote on the merits of the resolution itself.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Other amendments to the agenda. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, I'd like to add as item 11N of the resolution that I submitted in the before, 24 hours before the meeting as requested, called Government Deceiving Parents is Evil Resolution. So, I'm making that motion to add it to the agenda.
Very good. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. McMillan, to you to read it into the record.
Yeah. This resolution states, whereas a government deceiving parents about important matters involving their child is evil, and whereas State Superintendent Michael Rice has overseen the creation of video or videos instructing public school personnel about how to deceive parents on important matters about their children related to gender identity disorder, and whereas the video or videos instruct schools how to make sure other names the school uses for the child is not disclosed at parent-teacher conferences and when school and when official school documents like report cards are sent home, as well as not communicating when a child is using a bathroom or locker room that is other than his or her parents expect. And whereas State Superintendent Michael Rice refuses to remove this video or videos from Michigan Department of Education's website and refuses to apologize for overseeing this deception, therefore be it resolved that the State Board of Education will end Mr. Rice's contract as State Superintendent effective immediately and instruct MDE to remove any video instructing or condoning the deception of parents by a school or any school personnel. And I would like to speak to my motion.
Speaking to the motion for the purpose of getting it on the agenda.
Yes. I, I think that I've been accused, and maybe sometimes from time to time in the legislature, of having a little bit of a hyperbole engaging in that, but I assure you, this is no hyperbole. The more I thought about this and the more I saw the depth of deception and the harm that is, is being advocated to be wrought on children, my righteous anger just increased exponentially. I have a reporter told me, well, you know, I'm hearing that this is only letting the child decide, guiding, guiding the experience. And we're talking about 10-year-olds, eight-year-olds, 12-year-olds, and, and for the school to affirm, or maybe even help, help get them to do this, but to at least, at the very least, affirm a child's deception of his or her parents, the harm, the mental instability that is being caused and advocated by this department and by, you know, also by its leader, Dr. Rice, is, is intolerable. It's, I, it's hard to actually imagine. When I tell parents this, people who are not even involved in politics, they cannot believe it. And that same reporter said, look, it's a five to two, you know, majority. Why do you really think that this can be supported? And I said, look, I can only provide opportunity to do what is right. And clearly, we, you know, maybe we'll be held accountable, at least we know someday we will, for our vote. And I just feel that this is something that, you know, it almost seems as though government is interested in intervening and breaking up this relationship between family and the child and becoming the parent and acting as though they are the parent. And this is, is maybe just the beginning. If we don't stand up now and we say, this is fine, well, then I don't know where else it's going to go. So, I clearly think that this is an important matter for at least discussion, and I would hope support for my resolution. Thank you.
So, we have, we have a motion. We have a second. We've had it read into the record. We've had an explanation of why it should be on the, on the agenda. Ms. Snyder, to you.
I would just support the resolution being discussed at the table here today. I think there's moments in our history where systems of government must be checked. We're experiencing a moment like that. We've continued to go down this road, not interested in considering where the line is that you don't cross. And I think in order to not speak to the exact merits of this resolution to be very specific in my support to put it on the agenda, we have to be willing to have the discussion specifically around not withholding information from parents about their own children.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Other board members. Dr. Pugh?
Again, this is disappointing. And, you know, deceiving parents would be bad if that was the case. I cannot, not only will I vote to not have this put on the agenda, but, you know, I have to say that this is getting tiresome. You know, we have provocateurs who come to this table and continuously take up the time that we have for this body to talk about what we're here for, which is our children. And, you know, it's getting to the place where, I mean, when will it stop? When will it stop? First, it's putting teachers, librarians in jail. Nope. Before that, it was putting our health officials in jail. Then it went to teachers and educators in jail. I will vote no, and, and I'm tired of, of them provoking and coming to, to just get attention. And it works for you. It works for you. It's unfortunate.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Other board members before we vote on whether to put this on the agenda. Going once, twice, Ms. Tilly?
I just want to say, um, there's an estimated 373,000 residents who identify with the LQB-TQ community. We don't know exactly how many youth we have in our schools that identify that way, but they, they deserve to be protected. I've heard a lot of things, but I haven't heard about putting our youth first, their mental health first. Some of these students, one of the issues is training the teachers to deal with them because some of them have depression about this. Some of them are suicidal, and some of them don't feel supported. They have parents that would not support this lifestyle, which makes it very difficult for them. We have to put youth first. That's, that's why we're supposed to be here. And definitely, we want to work with our parents. We want to support our parents, but we want to put our youth first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Any other board members on putting this on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none. This is a roll call vote on putting Mr. McMillan's suggested resolution on the agenda. Mertz, please.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
No.
Albridge?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. As a reminder, this, the afternoon agenda includes consideration of Mr. McMillan's amendments to the board's bylaws and Dr. Pritchett's procedural motions related to the National Association of State Boards of Education. Now, please have a motion to approve the agenda and order priority as amended.
I'll move.
From Dr. Pritchett with a second from Dr. Pugh. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, a roll call vote.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, Marilyn, Mertz, Snyder, our venerable and inestimable State Board Executive will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
I am happy to do that. You've been, just been listening to Dr. Michael Rice. He's the State Superintendent and Chairperson of the Board. And Dr. Cassandra Albridge, who is at the end right there waving to you, is the Board's President. She resides in Dearborn. Next to her is the Board's Secretary, Tiffany Tilly. She resides in West Bloomfield. Next to her, Ellen Lipton. She resides in Huntington Woods, and she's the Chairperson of the Board's Legislative Committee. Come back down to the table in the orange jacket is Dr. Pamela Pugh. She resides in Saginaw. She's the Board's Vice President. Nikki Snyder resides in Dexter. She's a member of the Board's Legislative Committee. And we come across the table. There's John Cook. She does all the behind-the-scenes stuff that is just invaluable. And, and then another elected member of the State Board of Education is Dr. Judy Pritchett from Washington Township, and she's the Board's NASB delegate. That's her association, National Association of State Boards of Education. Next to me is the Board's Treasurer, Mr. Tom McMillan from Oakland Township. And I'm Marilyn Schneider, the State Board Executive. Thank you. Huh? Oh, and right, joining us virtually, representing the governor, thank you, Marty, for that check, is Stephanie O'Day. She's the governor's education advisor, so she is participating. She's an ex-official member representing the governor with, so is a non-voting member as ex-official. Thank you.
Thank you, Mertz. Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent of the Division of Educators, Student, and School Supports, would like to make an introduction. Dr. Chapman is joining us virtually today as she is recovering at the moment. Dr. Chapman?
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning, Board. I am pleased to announce that Mrs. Jennifer Saylor, and Jennifer is in the room, if she could stand, please. Jennifer has been named as our new Assistant Director of the Office of Educational Supports. She will be guiding in the areas of continuous improvement, educational experiences, literacy, and special populations. Ms. Saylor comes to us with a wealth of experience originating in Chicago Public Schools. She journeyed to this great state of Michigan and has, as of late, served students in both Kent and Muskegon Counties. Please join me in congratulating and welcoming Ms. Saylor.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Welcome, Ms. Saylor. Public participation, the public may register to provide comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 PM. Those wishing to make public comment must register before 1:00 PM today. To provide public comment by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage at www.michigan.gov/MDE. To provide public comment in person, please complete a public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed on the MDE webpage as previously noted. First item on the committee of the whole agenda is presentation of Milken Award winners. On April 21, 2022, I had the honor of surprising two of our great Michigan educators with the 2021-2022 Milken Educator Award. Jenna O'Driscoll of Merrill Park Elementary School and Saginaw Public School District, perhaps the only school district in the state that has three official names, and Stacy Yokana of Frazier High School and Frazier Public Schools are among the 60 honorees nationwide for 2021-2022. The Milken Educator Award winners are joining us today. We welcome our presenter, Dr. Sarah Kate Levann, Interim Director of the Office of Educator Excellence. In the audience, Dr. Keri Wasniak, Superintendent of Frazier Public Schools, Ryan Seines, Principal of Frazier High School, Dr. Ramont Roberts, Superintendent of Saginaw Public School District, and Dr. Lisa Tran, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Instruction in the Saginaw Public School District. There will be a video presentation. It is an informational presentation. No board action is required. No test will be taken. Dr. Levann?
Thank you. I have this great opportunity to share a little bit about the Milken Educator Awards and the information about these inspiring educators who were recipients of the awards. For 35 years, the Milken Educator Awards, which is an initiative of the Milken Family Foundation, have awarded and inspired excellence in the world of education by honoring top educators around the country with $25,000 unrestricted awards. The Milken Educator Awards targets early-to-mid-career education professionals for their already impressive achievements, and more significantly, for the promise of what they will accomplish in the future. Recipients are caught by surprise when their names are announced at emotional all-school assemblies in front of cheering students, proud colleagues, and distinguished officials and the media. Jenna O'Driscoll is the principal at Merrill Park Elementary School in Saginaw. Jenna has been teaching in the Saginaw Public School District since 2010. She previously taught second grade at nearby Jesse Loomis Elementary. Jenna had a relationship with most of the students in the building, and teachers from other grade levels often sent her pupils who needed extra help or a listening ear. In her own classroom, Jenna planned innovative, engaging lessons and activities that included cooperative learning flex strategies, flexible grouping, and data-driven interventions to address learning gaps. Her students thrived as a result, consistently delivering some of the district's highest growth on reading and math assessments. Jenna makes community building a priority, getting to know families, and understanding their needs. Stacy Yokana is a family and consumer sciences teacher at Frazier High School in Frazier. Stacy heads the Fashion Design Department in Frazier High School's Career and Technical Education Program, where she pioneered the inclusion of industrial sewing. I just learned this about industrial sewing, so this is fascinating to me. Industrial sewing is a specific skill set that is crucial not just to Michigan's auto industry, but also to the boat and recreational vehicle makers in the area. Stacy partnered with General Motors, one of the region's biggest employers, which helped Frazier High School outfit their classroom with industrial sewing machines and provided technical training. She spent several weeks working with GM's industrial sewing shop to become comfortable with the machines and understand the intricate stitching methods. Stacy's students visit GM's tech center as they learn to pull together color boards and design headrests for GM vehicles. Southeast Michigan schools have worked with the auto industry, but industrial sewing is an opportunity many students are unaware of before they step foot in Stacy's courses. Now, I'd like for us to watch a moment when Jenna and Stacy receive their awards.
We appreciate the hard work that you are undertaking to learn as much as you can during this challenging moment. And again, we appreciate your teachers, your support staff, and your principals as well.
I heard that you are some of the best students in the United States. Is that true?
Yes.
At the Milken Family Foundation, we believe that educators and your parents have one of the most important jobs in our country because they're entrusted with the responsibility of providing all of you with a bright future. We found an educator to represent your school, Michigan, and the entire country. Do you want to know who it is?
Yes.
I couldn't hear you. Do you want to know who it is?
Yes.
Wow, I heard you that time. The winner of the Milken Educator Award is Ms. Jenna O'Driscoll. The winner is Ms. Stacy Yokana.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for this award. Boys and girls, I want to say this is what hard work gets you. I've been working really hard in education for a lot of years, and I'm just, I'm so happy. I really was thinking of all the wonderful teachers that it could have been for. So, I don't know, I'm just so speechless. Thank you. Thank you so much. My heart just dropped. One of, one of the students yelled my name, actually, before they said it, and I was like, oh, my gosh. And then at that one, I was like, oh, my gosh, it really could be me, I guess. So, I was shocked and happy, of course. At this point, I'd like to invite Stacy and Jenna to say a few words if they would like. Well, like in the video, I just want to say thank you again. It was just as emotional this time as it was the first time, so. Thank you, Dr. Robert, for the nomination, Dr. Tran, my mom, for being here, my husband for all the support, and I'm just excited to continue my work in education.
I also just echo Jenna's thank you. It's been quite, just like the video, still an astonishing journey of excitement and disbelief, but so grateful. It's all of the kind words I know that we've talked about that have come from students and parents, and I got an email from an uncle, his nephew, just so kind, you know, loving things they're saying of their experiences that they've had in the classroom. But it's certainly an award that we receive in recognition of everyone, of our great administration, our amazing staff, of course, my husband, our family. It's not something you could do alone, so, thank you.
Dr. Rice, would you come this way, please? At this point, Dr. Rice will present the oblasts to both of you.
I feel like this is going to three generations. Ms. Jenna O'Driscoll, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Stacy Yokana.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Levann. We appreciate it. Congratulations, Milken Award winners. Keep doing great things for children. Board, the next item on the committee of the whole agenda is Presentation on Student Attendance Data Trends and Response Efforts. Presenters will address 2021-2022 academic school year data on Michigan K-12 student attendance, examine trends, and highlight local strategies for increasing attendance rates. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, deputy superintendent of the Division of Educator Student and School Support, and Mr. Tom Howell, executive director of Center for Educational Performance and Information, otherwise known as SEPI. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Dr. Chapman and Mr. Howell, good morning.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning again, Board. Today's presentation on student attendance will highlight data trends and response efforts. Next slide, please. Thank you. Specifically, data trends will focus on statewide rates overall and by student groups. Secondly, chronic absenteeism, specifically overall and by student groups. The second half of the presentation highlights response efforts via research-based strategies, next steps, and broader efforts. And now for the first half of the presentation, Mr. Tom Howell.
All right, so I realize following the Milken Awards, data can be rather bland. I'm going to move very efficiently. We've got a lot of slides and a lot to get through, so I apologize if the pace is less than desirable, but bear with me. So keeping it brief, we're going to look at attendance. To Dr. Chapman's point, we're going to look at overall attendance rates, and we're going to look at student groups as well. Then we're going to peek into chronic absenteeism, and let's get started. All right, first, we need to understand a few supporting definitions. This is a federal measurement of attendance, so this is a federal definition. We're looking at students being in attendance when they participate in at least half of their learning schedule. If they're a virtual student, they're participating in scheduled check-ins for any particular day. Attendance rates include students who have at least 10 days of enrollment in a district or school. We do not include shared-time students, students in juvenile detention facilities, or students with emotional impairments that are being serviced by the Health and Human Services industry. Attendance rates calculate as the total days attended for all students over total days possible. All right, so getting right into the numbers, the attendance rate for 2021-22 was 88.8%. This reflects a year-over-year drop of 4.1 percentage points, slightly more if you look back at 2019-20, coming in with a total drop of 4.3 percentage points. There was not a large variation in attendance rates by grade, with variations ranging between drops of 3.8 to 4.7 percentage points in each grade. Economically disadvantaged students struggled a bit more with attendance in comparison to their peers, with rates coming in at 6.1 percentage points lower than non-economically disadvantaged peers at 86%. In 2021, the statewide attendance rate again fell to 88.8%. That's after hovering around 93% for the previous four years. It really is important that we look at attendance rates in relative comparison over time. There were reasons over the past couple of years, naturally, that might have predicted changes to these rates, and we'll touch briefly on them here. Now, we know that the return to in-person learning had challenges. There were students in close contact with other infected individuals during the pandemic. They had to quarantine. They missed school. And there were some families that were leery of sending children to school if they had a vulnerable family member at home. You know, it was a risk, sending your child into a classroom potentially where they could be exposed. So, early on in the pandemic, that was a risk that really drove down some of our attendance rates. We also have to look at the rates relative to multiple, plural, years, not just relative to 2021, because guidance shifted in counting students over time. The shift in attendance probably really happened over a two-year period, and we have to consider school closure in 2020, then changing counting rules that happened in 2021. The larger dip that we see on this slide happened in 2022, but we think it was likely exacerbated by some of these factors. In 2019-20, the attendance rate was reported in the same manner as it was reported by districts prior to interrupted learning, so we see a rather flat rate in that particular year. In 2021, schools with extended COVID-19 learning plans, as defined in law, required at least two two-way interactions per week throughout the school year to demonstrate full delivery of instructional content to students. Because schools were required to provide the equivalent of 180 days of instruction, and since two-way interactions between an educator and a student constituted five days of instructional delivery, the attendance rules had to coexist in that space. So thus, having two-two-way interactions during a week constituted instructional delivery for five days, and full attendance was credited to students similarly during that year. So essentially, we think that that change in state law, change in policy, essentially delayed any appreciable dip that we saw in attendance until 2022, when reporting then returned back to the pre-pandemic rules for counting student attendance. All right, now we're going to break this data down quickly. The U.S. Department of Education takes a look at many subgroups when analyzing reporting metrics under ESSA, IDEA, and Perkins. Today, we're going to take a look through several of those breakdowns. For students who are economically disadvantaged, the overall attendance rate fell to 86%, which is six percentage points lower than the attendance rate of non-economically disadvantaged students. In the previous six years, the gap between these students was only about 3.2 to 4.6%. So the widening gap is something we'll want to continue to monitor. English learners' attendance rates fell to 89.3%. This was slightly higher than the attendance rate for non-English learners, which fell to 88.8%. The drop in attendance for the English learners was 5.3 percentage points compared to the drop of four percentage points for non-English learners. The sharper decline for English learners followed a year where they actually saw gains in 2021, but they track very similarly as they have in all years prior. Attendance rates for students who are homeless fell to 79.8%, which is 9.2 percentage points lower than the attendance rate for students who are not homeless. In the previous six years, the gap between homeless and non-homeless students ranged between 5.1 and 7.9 percentage points. This widening gap is another area we'll want to monitor. Attendance rates for students with disabilities fell to 86.4%, down 4.8 percentage points from the previous year. This compares to 89.2% for students without disabilities, a drop of 3.8 percentage points from the previous year. In the preceding six years, again, the attendance rate for students with disabilities has been between 2 and 2.4 percentage points lower than the attendance rate for students without disabilities. We do see that gap was relatively stable with a variation of about 2.8 percentage points in 2022. Taking a quick look at the breakdown by race/ethnicity, we see, again, in the slide, a relative consistent pattern over time. Each of the racial and ethnic breakdowns seems to track similarly to the way they tracked in prior years. The largest decline in attendance for this group was seen for African-American students with a drop of 6.3 percentage points. Other racial and ethnic student groups fell between 3.3 and 4.6. Of note, I didn't include a slide today on this, but we did not see appreciable changes by any specific grade range. If you wondered if it hit early elementary, early middle school, or high school differently, the ranges were relatively consistent over time, ranging between 3.8% drops and 4.7%. All right, I moved fast, I'm going to continue moving quickly. Next, we're going to take a chronic absenteeism. It's an alternative measure of attendance and is relevant for federal reporting. Again, starting with supporting definitions. Again, this is a Department of Education at the federal level requiring that we report chronically absent student counts following their definition. Students are chronically absent when they miss at least 10% of the possible scheduled days at the school they attend. Only students who enroll for at least 10 consecutive days are considered in this metric. Chronic absenteeism, I think when people think of it, brings up pictures of a kid that's maybe skipping school. They just decided they're checking out, they don't want to be there, they want to avoid learning, avoid their peers, avoid teachers, perhaps. But we really don't see that as the case. It's not typical, and it's really important, as we talk about chronic absenteeism, to recognize that there's a small fraction of students where the margin is so slim. A student that's not chronically absent can be very similar to a student that is considered chronically absent by the federal definition. On this screen, you see a couple of examples. You have two students who both enrolled for 180 days of school. One of them attends 163 days, they've got a 90.5% attendance rate, they're not chronically absent by federal definition. But student B, again, enrolled for 180 days, attends only 162 days. But guess what? They've got a 90% attendance rate, they are chronically absent. We'll take a look at that data a little bit later, but I want you to understand that chronic absenteeism is a measure that you have to use very carefully, as the difference between students and the margin between attendance can be rather slim. So here, we shifted to looking at the percentage of students who are so-called chronically absent. In school year '22, that rate climbed to 38.5%. Thinking back to the drop we just talked about for statewide attendance, with more than 4-point percentage, 4.1 percentage points of a drop, the overall decline coincides with an expected increase in the percentage of chronically absent students. While the attendance rate drop did not cause chronic absenteeism, it's logical that during the pandemic, a time when more students were missing school, we saw more students creeping over the threshold and being reported as chronically absent. All right, again, breaking this down by groups. The changes in chronic absenteeism between economically disadvantaged and non-economically disadvantaged students were similar, although the gap between groups noticeably widened, and that was the case we saw also in the attendance measure we talked about earlier. English learners continue to have the same or slightly lower rate of chronic absenteeism than non-English learners. Nothing was significantly different for each of these groups, as noted in the data. Again, for homeless students, we see similar patterns to students who are not homeless, both increasing at similar rates. There is a gap between the two, but the gap continues at a fairly consistent clip. For students who receive special education services, again, very common pattern, not a lot of increased absenteeism, at least from a chronic perspective, between years and between groups. And then finally, looking at this metric by race/ethnicity, we also see similar long-term patterns for chronic absenteeism. See a little bit differentiation in there. We've got one specific racial/ethnic category that saw some declines over, you know, about a three-and-a-half to four-year period, followed by a little bit of an increase there, but relatively speaking, the rates remained consistent. So very quickly, I did talk to you about attendance and chronic absenteeism, and that's two very distinct measures of attendance. This last slide considers groups of students based on their individual attendance, thus comparing attendance rates for students who were chronically absent and comparing them to students who were not chronically absent. As you would expect, students who are chronically absent, represented by the dash line at the bottom, have a lower-than-overall attendance rate of 78% in 2022, while those who are not chronically absent, represented by the dotted line at the top, have a higher-than-overall rate of 95.4%. What you're seeing here is that the gap between the two is not as overwhelming as we might have thought about when we first conjured up those thoughts of the students skipping school to avoid learning and avoid being in the classroom. While the measure does have merit, its overall value was minimized, we believe, during the pandemic, when we did not see the smoothing effect that we really think took place in attendance rates over that two-year cycle. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Chapman.
Thank you, Tom. The balance of our presentation this morning will share response efforts to the trends relative to attendance rates for our students here in Michigan. Our efforts include providing support to the field aligned to research-based strategies to guide next steps through which we can promote improved attendance yet this school year and for the future. Next slide. Focusing on research-based strategies, we would like to highlight the National Call to Action by Attendance Works. Attendance Works has become a national project initiative that utilizes action research methodology to assist school districts across the nation in addressing the prevalence of chronic absenteeism. It is a framework that will be shared with the field via future communication and guidance from the department. Next slide. Two of the research-based strategies that we will be highlighting today include multi-tiered systems of support, or for us specifically here in Michigan, MyMTSS, and early warning intervention and monitoring systems, or EWMS. These are two of the most successful strategies promoted by Attendance Work. If we can go back to that slide, please, which is cultivating a system-wide culture of attendance through the efforts of state education agencies, local education agencies, and community partners. The Michigan Department of Education is actively promoting a system-wide approach to addressing chronic absenteeism through both of these, MTSS and EWMS. Next slide. Focusing first on MTSS, which is a tiered approach, we would like to highlight what each of those tiers and the approach involves. Tier one consists of universal supports for all students that could be as simple as every classroom's roll call routine reminding students that they are valued and that it is important that they be present in school daily. Tier two includes congenial conversations with the student and family that promotes the incentives and rewards created through a system-wide approach to reducing absenteeism. This tier also includes collaboration among school-level staff as they work together to intervene and address barriers that are keeping students out of school. Tier three involves intentional intervention from school personnel that seek to address barriers to attendance that need not only their intervention, but will be coupled with community and/or professional services and support. Next slide. In addition to the tiered approach through MTSS, three strategic steps will be encouraged as we provide support to our LEAs here in Michigan. The first step promotes the recent theoretical framework of connectedness and belonging at school. It encourages educators to embrace the funds of knowledge that children bring with them to the classroom and speaks to the opportunity of teaching to the whole child. The second step supports schools being data-driven and through staff collaboration, developing a customized early warning indicator system that can bring about change and definitely provide support while addressing barriers, which then leads to the third bullet, or third step, system-wide efforts to acknowledge attendance growth by way of rewards and recognition Next slide. Here, we highlight two LEAs, Manistook Area Schools and Stevenson Area Public Schools that we consider successful because of the efforts they put forward through MTSS and EWMS. There was a slight decline of 1.6% in the Manistook Area Schools attendance rate in 21-22, which had 91.85%. 21-22, which at 91.85% was still higher than the statewide average rate of 88.8%. Stevenson saw an increase of 1.8% in attendance rate in 2021, which was 92.23%. In addition to their high attendance rates, both of these school districts also report high graduation rates, which definitely equates to students being consistently present in school through years K through 12. And now for some next steps. Michigan's success stories of improved attendance rates can grow with the following next steps as guidance and support to the field. First off, recommitting to the importance of attendance, focusing there on the connectedness and assuring students that they definitely belong in school. Secondly, continuing to build systemic efforts for positive school climate and culture. And finally, leveraging partnerships and raising awareness. As we end our presentation today, we want to share broader efforts. In partnership with the MyMTSS Technical Assistance Center, educators here in Michigan have the opportunity to participate in a professional development series using an MTSS approach to boost student attendance. The series actually began last week on October 6th and will run through November 14th. One week from today, on October 18th, the Michigan Department Office of Educational Supports will convene and host the annual Continuous Improvement Conference. This year's theme: Providing Connectedness, Safety, and a Sense of Belonging in Today's World. This form of professional development by way of an annual conference offers multiple breakout sessions addressing improving attendance through building relationships and promoting a positive school culture and climate. The next effort that we would like to highlight is our Community of Practice. Michigan Department of Education formed a team to participate in the federal Community of Practice led by the U.S. Ed. Office of Elementary and Secondary Education, or OESC, and in partnership with CAC, the Student Engagement and Attendance Center. The Community of Practice, titled Building Systemic Supports for Better Attendance, convened over the months of February through September by way of a virtual learning opportunity for state education agencies and select partners that focus on strategies to address chronic absenteeism. While the series has concluded, this now gives our MDE team an opportunity to make recommendations to include a forthcoming attendance guidance document along with additional tangible efforts that can improve attendance in Michigan, and we look to provide those supports and guidance within the next several months. And finally, new and yes, up and coming and very, very successful thus far, the Michigan Department of Education Office of Strategic Planning and Implementation will put a call to action through our My Strategy Bank beginning in November of '22. This call to action will go to the field requesting that LEAs submit strategies that they are currently utilizing to improve attendance in their schools and across their districts. This brings us to the conclusion of our presentation today regarding attendance rates, focusing on trends, and response efforts. We would like to thank you for this opportunity. And now for questions and commentary. Back to you, Dr. Rice.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, Mr. Howell. Any questions from state board members? Dr. Pugh.
Just a quick question, and you might have mentioned this, but like, how does tardiness play into absenteeism? Was that a part of the definition?
It's not. Tardiness is tracked separately. The only thing the federal definition tracks is presence for at least more than 50% of the learning opportunity for the student.
So like for a, what that seem like for a period of time? That's not like for the day, like if a child misses a class? How does that?
Correct. So class-by-class interaction, they'd have to hit 50% of their interactions for an academic day in order to be considered in attendance from a federal perspective.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions or comments from state board members? Ms. Lipton.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Thank you for the presentation. My question is, in addition to gathering the data, and that's clearly what this presentation is about, is there any ability by the department to actually analyze the data in terms of specifically what might be causing systemic absenteeism in a district? It strikes me that a lot of the data is looking at individual students, and yet there are situations in school districts where there may be patterns about absenteeism that might have, might need a more systemic look. Does the department have the ability to do that kind of analysis?
So I can defer to the department on whether or not they do that type of analysis. I will say the data is available for that analysis. I will say that data is also not connected to all of the contexts in which attendance exists. So it's challenging to understand why a student is missing school. It could be health-related concerns, could be something social, emotional. We don't collect that type of information that puts it into that type of a context. The department does use the data in their school report cards and for federal accountability purposes, so they do analyze it and use it in the public space to help shed light and information to the public, so they have a complete or comprehensive understanding of that metric for use in gauging how well a local school district is doing in managing its student body and fulfilling its need to ensure that its students are locally being present and educated.
So just a follow-up, if I may. Does the local district, though, have the ability that you're aware of to analyze the data? And what I'm getting at is an experience I had when I was in the legislature. There was a bill being proposed to basically take money away from a family through the SNAP program for a school, you know, a student that was chronically absent. And it ended up not passing, thankfully, but in an effort to try to get some better understanding, there were many of us that called on different school districts to talk more about these, what I would call more the granular reasons for absenteeism. And one situation that just sticks in my mind to this day is that there was a school that actually was able to take a look at the timing when absences were occurring. And they were able to actually analyze when that was happening. And when they actually took the time to talk to parents and students, what they learned is that when the community found that there was going to be gang-related violence, that was going to cross, students were going to have to walk through a particular, a gang line, I guess would be the way it was described in the hearing, that they would keep their students, for obvious reasons, home for safety. And it wasn't until the school had the ability to look at the data, not just as a number, but trying to understand why temporally it was happening, that they were able to actually fix the problem. And so my question is, is that the gathering of the data is very important, clearly, but who has the ability or the authority, or even the wherewithal, to actually go beyond the numbers?
Yeah.
To try to understand, because that's really, to me, at the root of where you can actually begin to solve a problem.
So I think the data exists locally, to answer your question, to understand the times of day and the duration of time within a day that a student is missing school. I think Dr. Chapman did talk about the Michigan EWIMS data tool. That is a collaboration with the intermediate school districts and the local school districts to build dashboarding so that a teacher would have that tool and that mechanism to actually look and see if there's a pattern of behavior or activity happening for a specific student that would impact their ability to learn over time. So it allows them that opportunity to see that data sooner and to then intervene and work on that relationship with the child and find out what's happening to see if there's a way the school can assist them. So, yeah, so that was Dr. Chapman's part, that was part of her presentation.
And that is available, so that's, every school district is loading that information up.
It's locally determined, right.
Yes.
Yep, they make a decision about whether or not they want to participate. Dr. Chapman, did I hit that correctly?
Yes, you did. We actually have 13 districts across the state that are participating in a pilot specific to EWIMS, which stands for Early Warning Indicator Intervention and Monitoring System. And so through this pilot, we are definitely looking at the utilization of EWIMS to spread across the state. However, prior to EWIMS, there are several platforms through the use of technology that districts are locally and independently utilizing, as Mr. Howell shared, to build dashboards, to track the data, so that individual schools can create or curate their own individualized monitoring and support system and to address those barriers schoolwide, but also drill down to addressing it for the individual student.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Tilly, to you for a benediction.
I think this is a perfect opportunity for the next steps section to revisit pre-COVID conversations of how do we strengthen and implement more trade programs for our students? How do we create more pipelines to college for them, giving them more access, programs with dual enrollment, so that when they graduate, they can also have an associate's degree in college? This will, I think, help students that are especially economically challenged to motivate them to go to school as well. So creating more opportunities for them for when they graduate.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Tilly. Do you want a second benediction?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
A second brief benediction?
Yes, because Ellen just reminded me of something, and that is a good question. We've talked a lot about the inferential statistics, but one of the pieces that we were really, I was really excited about is the fact that we could look at the health data. We know that asthma is a leading cause of absenteeism. And if there's any way that we can start looking at that data, I know it's not by individual, but just looking at maybe school buildings, and I don't know how that health reporting is going at this time at schools. I know that's always been an issue with gathering why a child's not there, as has been stated. Then the other part that I would really like to look at is transportation, knowing that transportation for districts has been an issue too, so, but just reminded of some of the things that Ellen has said, and just thinking about that, but really that health piece, I think, would be interesting to see, if there's any linkage.
So the health piece is a coding piece, and let's have some conversation in the next several weeks to understand better what's the art of the possible and what isn't, but what could be. On transportation, that's a district-by-district issue. It's not a kid-by-kid issue, but it's a district-by-district issue. But I agree, the wobbliness of transportation systems, the inability to get the requisite number of bus drivers does in fact affect attendance. You know, saying to high school children, "You get there yourself," that may work for some children, it may not for others. I want to thank, yes, please.
I just want to add one thing to the list that I did. Speaking of Ellen, she's been doing a great job with the Promise Zones.
Right.
We need more scholarship opportunities for our students, too. So just wanted to add that to the list of opportunities.
Okay. Thank you very much. I want to thank Dr. Chapman and Mr. Howell for their presentation. I appreciate you making yourself available today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's 11 o'clock. Next item on the committee of the whole agenda is a presentation by the Michigan High School Athletic Association. This presentation features an update on student athletic participation in high school athletics. We welcome Mr. Mark Yule, Executive Director of the Michigan High School Athletic Association, who will present a summary of athletics participation data.
Thank you.
He is joined at the table by our Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Mr. Kyle Garant. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. It is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Gentlemen, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Rice. Thank you, members of the Board of Education. I am going to move as efficiently as possible, just take you through a handful of slides that we have here, just to give you a little bit of background about the Michigan High School Athletic Association. We are a private, not-for-profit corporation, and we've been in existence since 1924. We are two years away from celebrating our 100th year of doing business. The way that it works each summer is that school districts voluntarily join the MHSAA, and essentially what they do is they adopt our rules and regulations as their own. We have 750 high schools currently as part of the membership. 78% of our high schools are traditional public high schools, another 13% are private, non-public schools, with the remaining 9% or so of public charter schools. So that's what the demographics of our high school level looks like. In addition, we have nearly 800 member junior high middle schools. All told, we have about 200,000 students that participate in our programs during a given school year. As I said, we are voluntary, and the thing that we're very proud of is we're also free. There are no membership dues, there are no tournament entry fees, there are no student assessments. When someone joins our association, it is at zero. It is no cost. And what we then try to do through our budget is we try and provide tremendous service. One way is every eligible athlete in our state, through our two kinds of insurance, has just over $1 million in both medical as well as concussion care insurance. So we are membership-driven, and again, we pride ourselves on being a really good value. Interesting to note that during a normal year, our revenue, of which we have about an $11 million a year budget, 76% of our budgetary revenue comes from being able to sell tickets at districts, regionals, quarterfinals, semis, and finals. And as I've often joked, the reason I have gotten gray and old and fat very fast is over the last 32 months, when your bottom line is dependent upon being able to sell tickets, and during those times where we were limited to two spectators per participant, it created some real challenges for us. But, you know, I think the thing that Dr. Rice and his team has learned, that while COVID created tremendous challenges, I think coming out of this, it also gives us some incredible opportunities, too. Our board, we actually have a 19-member board, our representative council. It is elected by our schools. So 18 of those members are superintendents, principals, and athletic directors, right from our member schools. Our 19th member is an appointee of the Department of Education, and Kyle has been a longtime board member as the MDE representative. So we're incredibly lucky to have Kyle as part of our team. Really, our absolute core mission is we are at our best when we're driven by our membership. Our association does not work best if it's director-driven, or staff-driven, or even board-driven, that we need to be driven by those in our member schools. Our theme for this year is really a return to normalcy. It has been survival mode, as it is for everybody the past 31 months, and what we're really making it a point to is to return to data-driven decisions, and that data does come to us through the membership. A great deal of face-to-face meetings this fall with follow-up surveys, and as I mentioned earlier, COVID created incredible challenges, but I do think there's some real opportunities. Here's the crux of what I want to share with you today. During 2019-20, so that was the year in which COVID stopped everything in March, we lost During 2019-20, so that was the year in which COVID stopped everything in March, we lost four of our winter sport tournaments in March of 2020. That was both girls' and boys' basketball, it was swimming and diving, as well as ice hockey. And then, of course, all of the spring, those opportunities were lost in 1920. We were able to capture, however, during the 1920 school year, participation numbers for all three seasons. Because just before the COVID shutdown happened, our spring sports practices had started. So we were able to identify the number of kids that came out, the number of kids that made spring teams. So thankfully, in terms of our data, we were able to capture our numbers from 1920. 2021 is a year that I wish to never relive again in my life. That was what I call the full COVID year, is literally it was, it was going from week to week, month to month. We did offer all of our sports with all of our tournaments reaching completion. We saw a drop in that first full COVID year of participation at the high school level of approximately 12%. COVID's impact on some sports was more severe than others. For example, participation in wrestling was dramatically down. What we found during that COVID year is there's a sport that cannot be more close contact. And what you had during that year is those kids who were really committed, serious wrestlers, they were in our programs. Those kids who might have been on the fence, maybe that was their second or third sport, or I'm a freshman, and maybe I'll give wrestling a try. 2021 was just not that time for someone to, to give that sport a try. So we were encouraged last year. We did see all of our numbers bounce back, not all the way back to pre-pandemic levels, but we certainly came a good chunk of that way. We were up last school year about 8% from where we were in that full COVID year. A nice increase, certainly something to celebrate, but not all the way back. Why were we so impassioned about why we needed to play? We thought that kids needed a connection and an outlet more than ever before. We listened to the medical experts very, very closely. We do have a sports medicine advisory committee that we really, really relied on. And, and one of the real benefits coming out of COVID is we have upped our game when it comes to mental health services available to our student athletes. Our coaches have to complete required training prior to every single season. And now part of that online video they're required to watch, there's about a 12-minute segment every season on student athlete mental health. What are some of the signs, symptoms that you might see in some of your student athletes? If you see those signs, what's the referral process? We've partnered with the West Michigan Mental Health Foundation. You may know them as B-Nice. Again, that's one of the opportunities that here in the post-COVID bounce, we've seen. And in so many parts of our state, and we can't lose this, the only access for some of our kids is school-based sports. The travel sports world has really become those that can afford it, those that can travel, that can write the check, that can do all those things. And especially in some of our underserved areas of our state, we really learned through COVID that our programs have never been more valuable. We really believe, as I wrap up here, the comeback is always stronger than the setback. We've seen progress, certainly the last 18 months, but we're not yet all the way back. And some of the conversations, you know, where Kyle and I will catch up, he's seeing some of those same things when it comes during the academic day, that yep, we're on the path back, we're not all the way there yet. And I can echo that almost to a T, if that's what we're seeing right now in the school sport athletic space. Once we do see that full recovery of that 12%, and hopefully some more growth, then I know that we're really back. Our goal's here, in the short term, we've got to stabilize the current sports that we do offer, as well as always looking at what's next. What are some new opportunities that we can offer where we can draw more kids in? And again, having a, a member of this team on our board, we really try and work in close alignment with what MDE is doing. And again, you know, Kyle's been tremendously valuable for us, and we will keep being driven by our membership. So again, the goal for this morning was just to give you a little bit of a background about who we are and why, how we're organized, kind of our very brief overview of what the last 32 months has been for us. The refreshing part this fall is every call I have fielded about a mask question has been about a football face mask, which has been, thank you for giving my slight attempt at humor, because it really has seemed like most of our work up until this school year has simply been the, the COVID challenges. And how do you continue to serve and give opportunities for kids during those times? So that's my, the formal presentation, and Dr. Rice, I hand it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Yule. Some of us only know slight attempts at humor. So we, we recognize them when we, when we see them. We also thank you for your, your leadership during this time. Sports are very, very important. They were important to me coming up, they're important to our young people coming up. To Ms. Tilly's earlier comment, there are some things that young people wake up to go to school for, and sports is one of those things. I can remember looking outside as a, as a kid, thinking, what's the likelihood that this game is going to get, is going to get played? And my interest in school rose or fell based on, based on the weather, based on the likelihood that we were going to play a particular sport a particular day. So thank you so much. We appreciate it. We appreciate you. Board members, any reflections? Ms. Lipton, Ms. Tilly, and then Mr. McMillan.
So in your, thank you for your presentation. In your presentation, you talked about 76% of the revenue is coming from the sale of tickets to events. What about the other gap? Where is the funding coming from?
Our remaining 24% comes from, it's a, it's a mixture of officials registration. So when a referee or umpire registers with our association, there's a small fee for them to get registered. We see some revenue with that. We have some corporate sales sponsorships, to where that then also fills in that bucket. Also some investments and savings that we continue to grow on. So we often talk about our funding being in different buckets, and without question, the largest bucket of that is ticket sales. And it's a never-ending challenge for us of how can we become more diversified? But yet, I'll point you back to where we started. It's also incredibly important that we remain free to our schools, that all of our schools that join us, there are no assessments, that what we can raise and spend in a given school year, we believe the association should generate that. So whether it's tickets or events or other means, it's an area where we're certainly trying to be as creative and as diverse as we often can. But, you know, the reality, we have 25 full-time employees. We're a pretty lean, mean operation. And I often share with folks that when you visit our building, every four employees that you see, we're able to employ three of those four simply by selling tickets. And by the way, when I talk ticket sales, we're only talking postseason tournaments. All regular season revenue that schools generate through, through their own events, the homeschool keeps that. So that, that's a quick overview of kind of how that dynamic works.
I've been at the Breslin many, many years, fortunately not having to pay for those, those tickets, because I had teams in those competitions. But those are great events. Ms. Tilly, Mr. McMillan, Dr. Pugh.
Thank you so much for being here with us and for your presentation. I am not a sports person, but I do come from a sports family. So I do know having coaches and refs in my family and my son playing, that sports is life for some people. And that this is very important for our youth to have access to, to sports for many reasons, physical and mental and emotional health. I do have a couple of concerns. One is, you know, with COVID, we are a lot better than, than where we were. How, how are the numbers with students catching COVID? And what, because COVID has changed. Before, it was kind of a death sentence, it was a death sentence. Now, when people get sick, it's, it's not necessarily a death sentence anymore. So what, what are the numbers? That's one. How are we doing with COVID?
So we monitor those numbers on a daily basis still today. We do rely on guidance that we continue to get from the State Health Department. The number of outbreaks that were actually pegged or traced back to a sports team through athletics were very, very low. What we found is that when there were positive cases and a team experienced an outbreak, it wasn't necessarily of what went on at practice, and even to a lesser degree, what happened during a game. It was actually the social activities that are often connected with athletics, that after practice, it's a team dinner. Around the weekend, a parent, you know, will, will have a bonfire, to where kind of a team bonding type thing. We found just what the Health Department was telling us is that COVID spread fastest through those indoor social gatherings. It wasn't even necessarily where all of our winter sports, other than ski, are indoors. We just saw very low numbers of outbreaks within an athletic team that were traced back to a practice or competition. So, and I, and please understand, you know, I think we're kind of in, in the, the ninth inning, so to speak, of COVID, but it's something that is still certainly on our radar. I hold my breath of when we do make the transition from fall with almost all of our sports, other than volleyball and swim being outdoors, to us all now going back in for another winter with another flu season. So that's something that remains on our radar.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Mr. McMillan, Dr. Pugh.
That was part one.
Okay. All right.
Part two, the GPA requirements are pretty low for students so that they can participate. What exactly, I know it's one point, something, it's 1.1?
Actually, our, our minimum rule is that students are taking and passing the equivalent of 66% of a full class load. So we set a minimum basement. And what a lot of our local districts will then do is they'll have a local requirement that's, that exceeds what our minimum is. And many, so any kind of a GPA requirement that's here, those are from local districts. We don't have a statewide GPA requirement. It's a percentage of classes being passed for a full-time enrolled student.
So, so 66%?
That's the minimum standard that all schools have to follow. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because I'm concerned about the academic side. How do we help our student athletes to do better academically and so that they can, they are better prepared to go to college?
Absolutely. And, and we did, through COVID, had to be creative with some of our academic requirements, because obviously, at least in that first spring into that first fall, virtual education did not mean the same thing in all districts or in all parts of our state. So we had to be creative to where we didn't want to create a situation where those who needed to be plugged back into an athletic team and be active again, that, that the rules weren't preventing that, because they had no internet access, for example, and couldn't complete anything online. So that is something here, as we do hopefully get fully through COVID, is really circling back and say, okay, are our current rules, now with much more virtual education available than ever before, is what we're requiring under that minimum rule really fitting with what schools look like today? So stay tuned on, on that second point, because that's, that's certainly a work in progress.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Mr. McMillan, Dr. Pugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'd have to say that as, as official health statistics make abundantly clear, kids were much more likely to die in a car accident than by contracting COVID. So certainly, we're not going to say getting in a car is a death sentence, nor a child contracting COVID was even less of a death sentence than getting in a car, which they do every day. Regardless, thank you for coming and your presentation. Obviously, there was a lot of controversy during COVID and, you know, groups like Let Them Play and other groups that were out there. Now, you say your organization is voluntary. If a school disagreed with your policies, are there other organizations they could have joined so that their kids could have played?
So we do have a couple, and they're very small, sir, of independent leagues. And then what's quite common, for example, in some prep schools, for example, do not belong to our association. And what they then do is often the prep schools will compete amongst the Midwest or even all across the country. So that, those numbers are very, very small.
And there seemed, in the, in the heat of COVID, there was a lot of, seemed like a lot of passing the buck. You know, we can't do it, the Health Department, the state, and MHSs, or MHSAA, you know. So I guess I'd like to understand, what were your decisions? What, you know, did you decide that students had to mask while playing very rigorous sports? Was that your decision?
It was not. And I'll, I'll simply, will agree to disagree that passing the buck, because I think of any organization that tried to step forward and be public and to shoot straight with our schools, I felt we really led in that area. So our position was quite consistent, that we not only felt it was important to play, but we could play safely. And we pushed for that at every single opportunity while following whatever either the executive order was at the time, and then after the transition to our State Health Department. So.
So you would have had disagreement with the state as far as who could have, if they, whether they should have been able to play or not?
We were, and we were fully supportive of playing, and play then had to simply take place under whatever the current orders were in terms of masking, testing, et cetera.
What about vaccinating? I, I recall, and I apologize if I recall incorrectly, but it seemed like there was a segregating of vaccinated and unvaccinated student athletes, and that those, you know, were those your decisions as well?
And sir, we had nothing involving vaccination.
As far as they weren't allowed to participate in practice, if they were unvaccinated or play, or they had to quarantine, you know, you had nothing to do with it. That was all, that's all on the state.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's important to know, who to hold accountable for some of these decisions that many people felt were unwise decisions. And it sounds like MHSAA had disagreed with some of them as well. And I, and I've, okay, so there is, private schools can participate in, I'm sorry for my ignorance, in MHSAA?
Yes, sir.
So all, you know, Christian, private, non, you know, secular, whatever. Okay, but you say that the alternatives are very small, and obviously, it's very hard to play with three player, you know, three teams or something that are five teams. So, you know, really, in effect, aren't you kind of the monopoly? You know, don't, you know, doesn't your organization kind of, whatever you guys say, you know, school, it's hard for them to break, to do an alternative, is all I'm saying. I mean, it's, it may be voluntary, but they're really, effectively, unless you want to travel hundreds of miles and play three teams or something, or, you know, that if you want to really play sports and have a good competition, probably your organization is the only game in town.
And I, I think the way that I look at it is, I think we work best when we're focused on what we're doing and we're serving our diverse membership, whether it's public, non-public, public charter schools, in as long as we continue to be governed by school people and policy reflects what our school people want. I'm more concerned with trying to do whatever we do to make it as appealing as possible to our current members and really not spending much time worrying about what other alternatives could or couldn't be.
And then, I guess finally, when those decisions were being made and you disagreed with the state, was the state interacting with you and asking for advice? And, you know, was there, I guess, a conflict of quote-unquote "science"? Because some felt that, you know, like I said, the risk was less than driving, getting in a car for, for student, for kids. We know that as a fact. So the risk was extremely low, and yet we are going to either force masking, which was, had, you know, some, I think, had very serious health consequences because of that, or, you know, forced vaccinations, you know, all these different things. If there, there was a disagreement, was there at least some attempt to say, okay, there's different sciences here, please listen to what we're saying?
Very much so. There was communication that we had with staff in the governor's office. And then after the law changed, there was lots of communication with leadership and Health and Human Services. I can say that that dialogue back and forth was very open and direct. We certainly didn't agree with everything on, on that side, and I'm sure if they were sitting here today, they would say the same. So there was open dialogue, and there was a chance to, to have back and forth.
Because there was a disagreement on the science?
Disagreement on a lot of things.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMillan, to, to Dr. Pugh.
I'll let Tiffany go ahead and respond, because there's a lot.
I want to say, let's practice not minimizing other people's experiences, especially when we are, are on this level as state board members. There were almost 40,000 deaths to date in Michigan from COVID. Over 1 million in the U.S. and 6.56 million worldwide. Everybody's experience was different. I, I come from a place where I know dozens of people that died from COVID. There were days where every single day, somebody in my circle, in my network, was dying. I experienced COVID in August. I know you experienced COVID, and it was more like a cold for you. For me, they had to get me the antiviral medication, because I have asthma and bronchitis. Two weeks after being in the bed, I tried to go for a short walk, and my lungs were burning. And I had to go get back in the bed. bed. So everybody's experience is, is different. The thing is, the objective is to keep people safe, as safe as we possibly can. And that's what, what people in this state try to do, whether you agree with it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Pew.
My questions were going to be related to the pay to play and how that has impacted the numbers. And are you, are we still seeing that? So that where the local districts are?
That number thankfully continues to go down each and every year.
The number of?
The number of schools that are requiring, and often they call it a participation fee or a transportation fee or something like that. We do survey that on an, on an annual basis. And that's a number that continues to go down because I think schools are seeing that as well. If our district can be completely free for extracurricular programs, but yet a neighboring district might have a pay-to-play fee, well, that's a way that we can attract families to our district. So some, some very creative superintendents have looked at that and say, well, if we get additional students keeping athletics at no charge, that's actually going to be more revenue than what we would see if we charged that nominal fee. So thankfully, that is continuing, Dr. Pew, ahead and, head in that positive direction still.
And I just, you know, I really thank you for how you maneuvered the conversation around COVID. And it, and more importantly, how it sounds like you maneuvered the whole issue around COVID and the seriousness to which you continue to take this, this disease. I, you know, I, I wasn't necessarily bringing this up, but when we talk about, you know, how deadly this disease is, there are other things that have impacted children. You know, the trauma that was caused by the deaths that children recognized in their families and/or serious illness, not knowing if parents were going to live, the high rates of children who have been orphaned, that I don't know if we're even going to be able to, to put numbers to, to that. I'm just looking, I was looking at some of the schools because I remember the cancellations and the, the cancellations of, of portions of the season when children did try to go back to the schools because it also caused community spread. We could go on and on and on and relive the need to, to Tiffany's point for the precautions that, that were taken. And there were those of us who really tried to work to make sure that our children had activities. We worked with the department, thankfully, and myself worked with University of Michigan for Impact at Home to make sure that we could make activity accessible to children at home as well as school. And that's a program that is continuing to go and has the sport, has the support of multiple sports teams. So like you said, we were able to get creative. And I just thank you for, for continuing to take this, this issue very serious for, for families and particularly some communities that, that were hit harder. So, so I thank you for that. And anything that, that we can do to support or to, you know, to bolster the, the program, would, would love to hear more.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Dr. Pritchett and Ms. Snyder.
As a previous high school principal and superintendent, I want to thank the organization for your leadership. And just to clarify, and I know I appreciated this, when there's conflict sometimes related to rules, related to eligibility, if you could just clarify that it is your board that sits down and makes those decisions because then it would be the locals who have chosen to be a member of MHSAA, who can then help explain to the community or to the parent or to the coach sometimes. These are the rules by which we are going to follow, again, be it eligibility, grade point average, or a rule on the field at that point. So.
Yes, we are, we are driven by educators and even our appellate process, that if a student who, who transfers and is ineligible by rule and wishes to appeal, that appeal is heard by five members of our board, our, our officers, and that's superintendents, principals, and ADs. So we are, we are an organization for schools run by school people.
Thank you.
And not an easy organization to run. Ms. Snyder.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Thank you for your presentation. We've all commented here today. You'll have a lot to unpack when you leave. But I just, I wanted to comment on a few things, but take a sidestep from there. From a statewide level representation perspective, I do think it is important that we try not to bring to the table personal issues. And I know we all battled COVID on some level. And even if we didn't share it publicly, we should be very cautious in sort of projecting what we think someone else's experience with it was.
Minimize other people's experiences.
Excuse me. She's got, she has the floor. Please, please. Okay, she has the floor, Ms. Tilly.
What I'd like to talk to you about is absenteeism and participation because we just had a presentation on absenteeism. And I know we've talked about GPA at the table when it relates to the issue of participation, but I wonder how those things can maybe be married and, and, and discussed further. So from a student athlete standpoint, is absenteeism, does it, any of that cross paths?
Certainly. And I do think that, for example, almost all of our schools, if you're an in-season athlete, for you to be able to not just play that evening, but to practice, you must be in school for, in most districts, it's the entire day.
Okay.
So I can tell you that being an in-season athlete, I think, does more to address the absenteeism issue than, than pot, is, you know, Dr. Rice started off, you know, kid's sitting in, in class at nine AM, I'm looking forward to game or practice tonight. And I think kids being in season, and that's why we encourage being a multiple sport, because that gets kids to school every day.
So I wonder, and again, just exploring things right now, this is just exploration, if we can engage with the absenteeism issue from the perspective of not just that day, you know, from a student athlete standpoint, participating in academics, improvement within that concept, and then also being a student athlete. Can you change the way you view the GPA issue and shift it to showing up more, if that makes sense? I don't know. I think it's worth exploring.
Part of the conversation.
It's not going to just have a positive impact on the student athlete. It's going to have a, have a positive impact on, on students all around athletics. So there, there's that, just as a, as a suggestion to explore. I really echo a lot of Tom's sentiment. I won't be repetitive. I, I would encourage the association to continue to challenge things and to really look deeply into the big picture of everything. One of the things that I observed during the pandemic and in 2021, what, what year did you call it?
The full COVID year.
The full COVID year. There was a, there was an issue with breaking down and sort of discriminating against, and, and you may not have been a part of this, but again, you're part of the conversation and you can carry it forward as we move forward. An issue of students that weren't vaccinated and needed to be tested. They could have tested positive. They may not even be infectious. Half of us in this room could have a, you know, be positive but not actually be infectious and, and not be a spreader. So as we move forward and, and think about viruses and how it impacts athletics, I just hope that we would never return to that kind of policy again.
Just to reiterate, we had nothing to do with
Right.
that policy or that approach.
Right. So please, continue to challenge that, even if you had nothing to do with it. If you have a seat at the table, that's all, all I'm asking. And I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to appreciate your, your presentation and your, your time. I ask Kyle to reach out to you about this presentation because I feel as if what is going on in sports is very similar to what's going on in, in academics and socio-emotional health as well, not simply in Michigan, but across the country. We saw a diminution in participation and in some cases in success rates, and we're seeing an increase in all facets of life as we move out of the pandemic. You mentioned ninth inning. It's unsurprising that you would use a, a sports metaphor. I, I'm, I'm sort of hopeful for a fourth quarter, but it turns on our, our sports. Thank you so much. You have a great day.
Thank you.
I would like to make another comment.
Please, okay, and brief, because otherwise we can relitigate during board member comments. Yes.
Well, I, I do want to comment because I felt disrespected. People share their personal stories, their personal feelings at this table. And people share that they feel disrespected all the time at this table. And it gets to the level where they have people calling in disrespecting us. So if you want to say leave personal things out of it, you have to, you have to follow that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next item on the committee, the whole agenda.
Were you offensive line or defensive line?
Pardon?
Were you the offensive line or defensive line?
I didn't, I didn't play football. I played soccer, basketball, tennis, and baseball. Next item on the committee, the whole agenda is a presentation on gun safety survey results. Mr. Bernie Porn, president of Epic MRA, will share information and findings from a recent poll conducted by Epic MRA to assess Michigan voters' opinions on issues related to gun safety in schools. We welcome Bernie Porn, who is joining us virtually. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. It is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Mr. Porn, good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Let me pull up the present, again, can you see the presentation, the PowerPoint?
No, but we can see you.
Oh, okay. Well, I did put the PowerPoint up and, and you can't see it. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I can see you in front of me.
Take your time. It gives us a few, a few seconds to take some deep breaths. That's not all bad.
Okay. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rice. Just wanted to briefly mention before getting into the poll results that in my former life, I worked for just under twenty years in the Michigan House of Representatives. And in my last couple of years, I was director of the Public Affairs and Communications Staff. And based on polling at the time, we urged our caucus and the speaker to consider gun safety legislation, passing that legislation. And I can just say that the polling we based those efforts on at that time pale in comparison to what I am about to show you. And this poll was conducted in, in August. It was commissioned by MDA, Progress Michigan, MEA, and AFT. And it was on gun safety issues and legislative proposals. It was a six hundred sample survey that gives you plus or minus four percent error rate. That means that if the response is near fifty percent, it could be plus or minus four. However, as you will see, some responses are greater than that. If it's like ninety percent, it's only an error rate of two point four percent. And that's within a ninety-five percent confidence level, which means that one out of twenty surveys will likely fall outside of that error rate range. Seventy percent of our interviews were conducted with cellphone-only respondents, and it was conducted from August eighteenth through the twenty-third. We asked a number of different questions to assess the voter perception of existing gun laws as well as potential legislation. And we also tested thirteen specific proposals on gun safety. And the first question, are you, are current Michigan laws on the purchase and ownership of guns too strict, about right, or not strict enough? The highest percentage, not strict enough, at forty-three percent. Forty-two percent saying they are about right, and only seven percent indicated that they thought the existing laws were too strict, with eight percent undecided. Now, in terms of the demographic breakdowns, we had literally dozens of demographic breakdowns of the data. However, we thought it was important to look at the partisanship of respondents, as well as whether or not they're gun owners, CPL holders, or NRA members. And so the, the key demographic breakdowns throughout the presentation is among Democrats, which represented thirty-nine percent of the sample, Republicans, which also represented thirty-nine percent, independent voters, and other parties was twenty-two. Gun owners, where someone said they or someone else was a gun owner, was fifty-three percent. And CPL concealed pistol license holders, that was twenty-nine percent. And fourteen percent of the respondents were NRA members. And in response to that question, seventy-three percent of Democrats said that law, current laws are not strict enough. Thirty-nine percent of independents felt that as well. Most of the respondents in those groups said that they're about right. But it is significant to note that among independents, thirty-nine percent said not strict enough, only four percent too strict. And even among gun owners, twenty-nine percent not strict enough, seven percent too strict, and CPL holders, twenty percent to ten percent. NRA members were slightly different, with sixteen percent saying they're too strict, and fourteen percent not strict enough. We also asked, is it more important to protect the rights of people who own firearms or to address gun violence? Forty-nine percent said addressing gun violence was more important. Forty-one percent saying protecting the rights of gun owners was more important. Ten percent were undecided. Key demographic breakouts, eighty-four percent of Democrats said it's more important to address gun violence. Forty-eight to forty-three percent of plurality of independent voters said it's more important to address gun violence, whereas sixty-nine percent of Republicans and fifty-seven percent of NRA members said it's more important to protect the rights of gun owners. And among gun owners, forty-eight percent, less than the majority, said it's important to protect the rights of gun owners. But thirty-nine percent said addressing gun violence. And CPL holders, forty-nine percent, also less than the majority, said protecting the rights of gun owners. And thirty-five percent of CPL holders said that addressing gun, gun violence was more important.
Thank you.
Do you support or oppose enacting stricter gun safety laws to prevent gun violence? Sixty-six percent of all respondents said they support it, forty-four percent strongly. Twenty-seven percent say they oppose, sixteen percent strongly, seven percent undecided. And among the demographic breakdowns, it ranges from ninety-two percent of Democrats, sixty-six percent of independents, sixty-three percent of gun owners, fifty-nine percent of CPL holders. Also, a narrow forty-five to forty-three percent plurality of NRA members said the same thing, with a narrow forty-six to forty-four percent of Republicans saying they oppose stricter laws. How much of a priority is it to enact stronger state laws to place additional restrictions on gun ownership and use? Sixty-five percent said it was important. Thirty percent thought it was a top priority. Thirty-five percent important but not a top priority. Thirty-two percent said not important. And twenty percent of that group said it should not be done at all. Key demographic responses, ninety-three percent of Democrats said it was important, fifty-two percent a top priority. And you've got sixty-two percent of independents and twenty-three percent saying a top priority, sixty percent of gun owners, fifty-three percent of CPL holders, and forty-three percent of NRA members, forty percent of Republicans. And it's interesting to note that the NRA members, they said top priority at sixteen percent, equal to not important, and it should not be done at thirty-seven percent. And the breakout of that, of those responses is, is interesting. Requiring background checks. Now, this is the first of thirteen proposals, requiring background checks on gun sales, including gun shows and other private sales. Ninety percent said that they support this, seventy-eight percent strongly, eight percent opposed, two percent are undecided. Looking at the breakdowns, clearly, every single group, including NRA members, supports background checks ranging from ninety-six percent to sixty-nine percent. And so it is, the reason we selected these demographic groups is that it was the conclusion that if Democrats, Republicans, independents, gun owners, CPL holders, and NRA members all support a proposal, that should be at least considered as a package or part of a package of gun safety legislation. a package of gun safety legislation. The next highest percentage, and all of these are ranked by the highest level to the lowest level of support. 82% supports, supports requiring child access prevention laws, 52% strongly, 13% opposed, 5% undecided. And you look at the breakdowns again, solid support from all of those six groups, ranging from 93% to 63% of NRA members. Are voters more or less likely to support legislators who oppose a child access prevention law? 18% said they're more likely to support that legislator. 39% say they would not be influenced. 38% say they're less likely to support that legislator. 28% much less likely. And if you look at the, the demographic breakdown, not surprisingly, 54% of Democrats less likely to support a legislator who opposes that law. 35% of NRA members less likely, and 39 to 38% of independent voters. And it's also worth noting that every group except NRA members, no, all of, all of the groups are less likely by higher percentage, higher percentages than more likely. Preventing sales of firearms to people reported to law enforcement is dangerous to themselves or others. 80% supports this proposal, 63% strongly, only 13% opposed. And again, the pattern is the same on this. 92% of Democrats, 69% of Republicans, down to 65% of NRA members support this gun safety Requiring a waiting period of at least three days after a gun is purchased before it can be taken home, 79% support, 59% strongly, 17% opposed. And the same pattern, solid support among Democrats, with the lowest support among CPL holders at 61% and NRA members at 63%. And Republicans, 65%. But solid support among all of these six, six groups, suggesting that that should be part of a gun safety package. Imposing criminal penalties or fines for those who buy firearms for another person, 78% supports it, 59% strongly, 18% opposed. And again, the same pattern, solid support among all of these groups, ranging from 88% to 67% of Republicans. Requiring a person to be aged 21 instead of 18 to be able to purchase an assault-style weapon, 75% supports the proposal, 64% strongly, 20% opposes, 15% strongly. And again, the same pattern, strong support among Democrats, and more than 60% support among all of the other groups, including Republicans and CPL holders, and obviously NRA members as well. Establishing extreme risk protection orders to prohibit named persons from purchasing or possessing firearms, 73% supports, 44% strongly, 20% opposed. And all of the groups are supportive, except NRA members are supportive, but only by a 47 to 43% plurality, whereas all of the other groups by 60% or more, 61% or more. And are voters more or less likely to support legislators who oppose extreme risk protection order legislation? 17% say they are more likely, 43% would not be influenced, 33% less likely. And the demographic breakdown shows that 50% of Democrats are less likely, 35% of NRA members less likely, they feel strongly about that issue. 32% of independents less likely. And the highest percentage for other groups is no influence. But it is also important to note that the less likely is higher than the more likely in all groups, except for Republicans, at 22 to 19%. More likely over less likely. Banning all firearms from schools and college campuses, except for law enforcement. And this is supported by 72%, 57% strongly, 23% opposed. And among the demographic groups, this is the one proposal that is not supported by NRA members, but it's only opposed by bare 51 to 45% majority, whereas all of the other groups support it by at least 54%, up to 91% of Democrats. Raising, requiring a person to be aged 21 instead of 18 to be able to purchase any firearm, 67% supports this, 52% strongly, 30% opposes. And you notice that all of these, most of them, are very small percentages that are undecided. This is 4% undecided. And the demographic breakdowns, again, every single group supports this, including 51% of NRA members, 52% of Republicans, and up to 86% of Democrats. And then, to summarize, there are eight proposals that are supported by all six groups, and there is a ninth that is supported by all except for NRA members. And that one group, one proposal is ban firearms from schools. And you can see the, the 90% down to 67%. Background checks, child access prevention, no sales to those who are a danger, three-day waiting period, penalties of firearms if bought for others, age 21 to buy an assault rifle, extreme risk protection orders, and then firearms from schools, and age 18 to 20, or age 21 to buy any firearm. And there are other proposals that do not have as much support, 57% support banning high-capacity magazines that hold more than 10 bullets, 57% support, 43% strongly, 38% oppose, 28% strongly. And the breakdown, you can see 82% of Democrats and 61% of independents support it, including 47 to 46% of gun owners, but the other groups oppose it by solid majorities. Banning all assault-style weapons, such as the AR-15 and similar semi-automatic rifles, 55% support, 45% strongly, 43% oppose, 32% strongly. And the breakdowns, again, 84% of Democrats, 54, 50% of independents, and all of the other groups oppose it by fairly solid majorities. And obviously, this is a, as you know, this is a proposal that President Biden has called for. There is not as much support in Michigan, obviously, as there may be in other states. I would have preferred that he had mentioned all of the areas of gun safety laws that are supported before focusing only on this, but it is not supported as much in Michigan. Unless you're talking about the legislators who represent marginal competitive districts, then they may be persuaded by the fact that Democrats and independents are both support. Equipping teachers and school staff with concealed firearms to deter and respond to school shootings, 47% support, 44% opposed, including 31% who strongly support, but a higher 34% oppose. 9% are undecided. Now, this is a proposal, in addition to mental health responses, that Republicans had suggested as a solution. And obviously, it does not have the kind of support that other proposals have. However, among Republicans, gun owners, CPL holders, and NRA members, you do have support, whereas among independents and Democrats, there's a strong opposition. Now, allowing gun manufacturers to be sued for liability by private parties, this is opposed, 56% to 36%, 48% strongly. And when you look at the demographic breakdowns, it is only Democrats who support it with 65%. All other groups solidly oppose it in terms of suing gun manufacturers. So this should definitely not be a part of any proposal for a package of, of gun safety laws. And then, are voters more or less likely to vote in November because of recent mass shootings? We gave them a description of all of the recent mass shootings, including Oxford. And 54% overall said that that would influence them to be more likely to participate in the election. 41% said that they would not be influenced, and only 2% said they would be less likely to vote in the election. But there is a profound difference in terms of the motivation of partisans. 74% of Democrats say they would be more likely to participate in the November election. 52% of CPL holders, more likely, 49% of NRA members, whereas independents and Republicans know real influence. And it is noteworthy that I saw in mirrors this morning that there's going to be a little over $2.5 million spent. And a poll was just released showing more support for many of the proposals I just described, and supposedly, there's going to be advertising in the gubernatorial and other elections on gun safety issues heading into the last few weeks of the election. And as a final slide, I just recap those proposals that have, the eight proposals that are supported by all six demographic groups, and the ninth supported by all but the NRA members, which we had just looked at. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Porn, for your presentation. Board members, any questions or comments? Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Bernie, for your presentation. The way a question is asked, that, that can have an impact on the results of a survey, right?
In many cases, yes. You can test a, a up or down question, and then quite often in surveys, you'll test messages on both sides of an issue. But the polling of the, the, the wording of the question can have an impact. And you're welcome to look at our website, epicmra.com, and we have this posted so that you can see the wording of all the questions.
Right.
And you can see that they're quite unbiased in terms of the wording.
Well, I mean, well, but I mean, I guess, and also, given, if you give background, like, for example, you know, the question imposing criminal penalties or fines for those who buy firearms for another person, if you would have simply, if you stated that currently federal law provides for up to 10 years in prison and $250,000 fine for doing such, that might impact, you know, this implies that there are no criminal penalties. So I mean, that kind of a thing seems quite deceptive, you know, about the, requiring a person to be 21. Maybe if you gave a background and say, this, this means that people that are active military would no, would not be allowed to buy a firearm in Michigan if they were under 21. That would probably impact it. Equipping teachers and school staff with concealed firearms, I know people that think that that question implies that teachers would be forced to. But no, you know, no one, no one in their right mind is saying that they're, they would be forced to. They're, the idea is, is that a district may ask for volunteers, somebody voluntarily, and then after the, the school district makes sure that they are well-trained. And so, if you gave that background, I would imagine the number could be significantly higher. So I'm just saying that the way, if information is either withheld or, or, you know, the type of information given can certainly impact the results of a survey tremendously, I would, I would say.
Well, again, if you look at the wording of our questions, on any question, on any poll, you can say, well, if you only said this, and this, and this. And usually, that is said by someone who usually supports the other side of how the results came out. And my guess is that that may apply to you. I'm not sure, but I think it might. And so, with any survey question, you can say, well, if you only told them this, this, and this, why, it may have been different. Well, you can provide that. That is message testing, and that goes beyond a simply, simple statement of what the law would do, or what the proposal would do. And much of the questions that we, many of the questions that we had were duplicated from a national survey that was taken on, and again, it was a nonpartisan survey that was done, showing what the results were.
Well, it seems there's quite a bit of deception that went on in this polling, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder, to you.
Yeah, Bernie, I would suggest that if you think that he stands on one side of the issue because of the outcome of the, of the questions, then you could also, likely just also stand on the other side of the issue as the person who poses the question through message testing. So that point is well-taken, and could be reversed as well. And to that point, on page three, there's a question that says, is it more important to protect the rights of people to own firearms or to address gun violence? And I mean, this is just such a general question that without context, many more might say, might answer depending on the context, right? So today, we'll be talking about gun violence in relationship to mass violence threats by students or staff within a school environment. And we all might feel a certain way as it relates to this question within that context. And then, the next question that follows is, how much of a priority is it to enact stronger state laws to place additional restrictions on gun ownership and use? Now, that, now that could be a totally different context on the whole, right? So we might say that stronger background checks at, at gun shows, we might say, okay, now we're going to make it mass, you know, background checks. You still need an ID to do that. And you're going into a whole nother, a whole overview of how gun sales works, and a concept of illegal gun ownership, which is an issue with the gang violence that we just talked about recently as it relates to absenteeism in schools. How do you solve that when these questions don't actually address the issues that we're, we're trying to solve that are on the table? So I think it is important to consider this issue of how are questions asked? What is the, the problem that needs to be solved when we ask the questions? And how is message testing going to impact the outcome?
Well, I would point out that while NRA members and Republicans and CPL holders and gun owners responded to these proposals in strong support, there were others that they opposed. Talk about assault weapons, banning them, a national discussion on that, obviously, with the President's proposal. In Michigan, our data shows that they are not as supportive of that. So that suggests even more that the proposals that they do support are ones that could become part of a gun safety package of proposals. And so, you can, you can say that, I think, about any, any question, but when you look at the differentiation between their responses, I think their responses are pretty true and, and, and truthful in terms of how they perceive the issue.
Perceive the issue according to the nuance of the, of the questions. Thank you.
No, no nuance, I don't think.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Other board members? Looking to see if the board president would like to speak? No. Dr. Pritchett? Anything? No? All right. Ms. Lipton, Dr. Pugh, Ms. Tilly? Dr. Pugh, to you.
I have a question. I don't know if it belongs here or in the legislative updates, but this is a question where Senator Sharkey had promised a hearing post Oxford, and that was to Senator Baer on the red flag or the safe storage law. And we know that that has not happened yet, and that's quite unfortunate, especially when you're looking at this data here. And I'm just wondering where, if anyone knows where that stands, or if we can get an update.
We will, we will get you an update prior to legislative update.
Okay.
So prior to late this afternoon.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Other board members? Ms. Tilly? No?
Do you want, because I would like, and thank you so much for the presentation. This is so important. Would you, we have a resolution?
We do. I just want to-
Do it after lunch?
Well, what I want to do is I want to make sure that everyone has had- Well, what I want to do is I want to make sure that everyone has had the opportunity to share on the survey results and ask any questions that they have. If they have, and it appears that they have, if you would like to move your resolution now, which is pertinent to this particular issue, that would be fine.
I'd like to make a motion that the state board votes on the resolution on safe school, safe school hiring.
Very good. So, we have a motion from Ms. Tilly, a support by our legislative committee chair, Ms. Lipton. Any discussion? You read it into the record a couple of hours ago. I think that that is sufficient. Do you care to share additionally on the resolution? Yes.
So, we're in the committee of the whole, or we're in the committee of the whole meeting. As it's my understanding, that's where we don't take action, we take it during the regular meeting.
Right.
Is this, so, I was expecting this to come up under action items, which is, this sounds like an action item.
It is an action item, but we can toggle back and forth between the two meetings. I think the difference is, is that we ask those present if they would like to weigh in on the resolution, and we'll do that prior to the vote.
Ask those present, I mean?
Right. The members of the public who are present, we will ask them prior to a vote if they would like to weigh in on the resolution which is before us.
And the people that will call in for participation later?
If they would like to weigh in, they can weigh in.
But not before the vote?
The resolution was put on the agenda this morning. It was not part of the agenda prior to being placed on the agenda this morning. Those who signed up weren't aware that it was on the agenda.
Exactly. That's why it should wait until, you know, now that they'll, they've heard that it is, then they can weigh in on it during public participation.
Fair enough. Would you mind withdrawing it for the moment and re-presenting it this afternoon under legislative update? Would that be all right?
I can withdraw my motion.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Fine, thank you. Board members, it is 12:06. We've had a rich morning. Have a great lunch. At 1 o'clock, we will reconvene. We will not reconvene at 1:05, 1:06, 1:07, 1:08 is right-